We are live on YouTube.
Is that an officially all clear?
Uh, we have seven seconds.
Well, he needs to finish up. Starting the cable. Okay, I think we can go now.
Good. All right, we're done.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call the November 12th, 2020 meeting of Dave Norman Planning Commission to Order. Renee, please call roll.
Mr. Beck?
Uh, here.
Ms. Bayham? Mr. John? Ms. Williford?
Here.
Ms. Byrd?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Knotts? Ms. Zink?
Present.
We have a quorum.
I'm going to start with the items on the consent pocket, which is item number two, TMP-158, approval of the October 8, 2020 Planning Commission Regular Session Minutes. And item number three, COS-2021-4, consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate Survey submitted by Dillard 1991 GST Exemption Trust, Dodson Thompson Mansfield, P LLC for Dillard Estates with a variance in the 20-acre requirement for tract four for approximately 79.9081 acres of property located at the northeast corner of 72nd Avenue Northwest and just Robinson Street. Along with item number four, PP-2021-3, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by David and Kelly Hames, JW Dansby PE for Hames Edition for approximately 1.0902 acres of property located at 910 and 920 Oklahoma Avenue. And do any of the members of the commission wish to remove any of the items from the consent pocket? Okay, seeing none, does any member of the audience wish to remove an item from the consent pocket? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
That's a motion from Commissioner Beck and a second from Commissioner McDaniel, and a vote, please.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts? You're muted.
Commissioner Knotts, you're still muted. Is it okay to do a?
Now we got him.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
The motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Being along into the non-consent items, we have item number 5O-2021-15. Haines Estate Enterprises LLC, Richard Haines, requests a closure of a right-of-way within block one replat of Fuzzles Second Edition at 1230 West Main Street. This action was previously continued from the October 8, 2020 meeting and has subsequently been withdrawn, so no further action is needed at this time. On to agenda items six A and six B. Six A is R-2021-58. Denise Finch, Clear, Jeffrey A. Clear, and the K. A. Lins Revocable Trust request amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from low-density residential designation to commercial designation for approximately 0.22 acres of property generally located at 319 and 321 East Dawes Street. Together with agenda item six B, O-2021-19, Denise Finch, Clear, Jeffrey A. Clear, and the K. M. Lins Revocable Trust request rezoning from R3 multifamily dwelling district to Spud simple plan unit development for 0.28 acres of property generally located at 319, 321, and 323 East Dawes Street. Do we have a staff presentation?
We do.
Thank you.
All right, Laura Hoggett with the City Planning Department. So this is a, an application for a 2025 land use plan amendment from low-density residential to commercial at 319 and 321 East Dawes Street. And so the west two lots are currently low-density residential. And they're requesting commercial. You can see to the west is pretty much all of low-density residential and then commercial along Porter. And they also have a rezoning application from R3 and C2 to Spud. And so this is for three tracts. The 2025 is just for the western two lots. See, so to the west is mostly R3 and then C2 along Porter. And then the western two lots are currently being used as residential. And then the eastern lot is Don's Mobile Lock Shop, which is commercial. So here's our aerial. Sorry. Okay, so here's the two residential lots with some parking right off the street. And then Don's Mobile Lock Shop. Looking west down Dawes. East Porter's back here in the background. And then across the street, there's vans. And then this is back on Acres. This is the back of Don's Mobile Lock Shop. And then the existing house with the driveway and garage. And so this is part of the Porter and Acres Improvement Project that Public Works is doing. So it's going to become a cul-de-sac. And then this will be parking for vans. And Don's Mobile Lock Shop is here. And this is the proposed site plan with the Spud. So the residence in the middle is going to be torn down to do surface parking. Don's is also requesting to expand their existing building. And then the residents on the west and the garage are set to remain, but could potentially become commercial in the future. And we do have the applicant on the call that I think will do more of a in-depth presentation. But staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for staff? Commissioner Beck, I don't know if you're speaking, but you're on mute.
I just need a little bit more clarification about that cul-de-sac and how that's all working into the improvements there on Porter. Because I also see like a little two-lane road coming off of that towards the east.
Let me share again. So what's it? What was your question exactly?
Um, well, I'm just looking. Is that you showed the cul-de-sac, but then there's a little two-lane road, I guess, coming from Don's Mobile Lock? Is that like fire access or is that just like truck access? I'm not sure what that is.
Oh, right in here?
Yes, that.
Um, they're going to use this, it'll kind of be parking for their vehicles and their vans. So it's pretty much just access to their building.
That's not public right-of-way, that is a private driveway.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Beck. Do we have any other questions from commissioners for staff? May we have the applicant presentation?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Gunner Joyce, Reeger Law Group, attorney to the applicant. On the call with us, we've got Sean Reeger, also Tony Bragg, the architect. And then Mr. and Mrs. Clear are on the call as well to take any questions you might have for them. But I'm going to share my screen real quick and give you a quick presentation. Like, just like Laura said, here is the subject tract. It's three separate lots, so 319 is this lot right here, the middle lot is 321, and the farthest east is 323 Dawes Street. Again, here's a quick aerial picture. This is the existing Don's Mobile Lock Shop building. And it's kind of one of the main reasons we're here tonight is Don's Mobile Lock Shop is seeking a way to expand the building and then also find a site plan that's going to function well with the new improvements to the Porter and Acres intersection. Kind of some of the legalities here, the existing 2025 plan, just like we talked about earlier, shows the two eastern or western lots, 319 and 321, as low-density residential. But as you can see here, this dark red line that comes through is the Porter Quarter zoning overlay district boundary. As you can see, both on the zoning map over here and the 2025 map. That's the commercial limit line. So really what's anticipated is everything to the west of that line become commercial uses. And so that's what we're requesting here is bring the 2025 into compliance with that plan, requesting commercial for all three lots. And then the zoning, we're requesting a Spud for these three lots. But really, it's commercial uses and then just allowance for kind of some of the nuances that we'll talk about as we go through this, but.
You said everything west of that line, you're meaning everything east of that line, right?
Absolutely, yep. My apologies, everything to the east, right. Here is the, just a quick picture of the intersection plans. So currently today, access to Don's is both off of Dawes Street in the back, and there's parking in the Acres right-of-way. You can kind of see some of these right here, these parking spaces existing today are in the Acres right-of-way. The front door is off of Dawes Street, and there's some parking spaces that come in right here on Dawes. Because of the overall changes to the site, the proposal here is to have main access off of Acres, a new driveway that's going to be constructed by the city as part of the improvement projects, and then to push traffic out of the parking lot back onto the new cul-de-sac. Real quick, I think Tony might be able to give more guidance on this, but it's my understanding this two-lane road, this little access cutoff, is it's technically city right-of-way, it's city property, because this is the property line that's owned by the applicants here. It very likely will only be used by Don's Lock Shop, because it goes right to the site. But this is off of their property and it is city property. As you can see here, to kind of talk you through the request, this is the proposed addition to the existing Don's Lock Shop building in order to make up for some of the parking that is currently in the right-of-way. That's going to go away, they're going to propose a new off-street parking lot to function and to supply parking for the site. And then the farthest west lot here is going to remain residential for right now. It's in the Spud that it can be redeveloped into commercial uses as contemplated by that Porter Quarter zoning overlay district. But when that redevelopment takes place, the two main buffer requirements of the Porter Quarter Overlay District, a masonry wall and a landscape buffer will come into place. And so the applicant, at the time when this residence is either removed or transferred into commercial use, the buffer requirements will take place. Currently, as soon as the parking lot is put in, the plan is to put in just a wood fence, a six-foot stockade wood fence, because the field right here is still going to be residential with two residential houses right next to each other. But when that becomes commercial, as contemplated by the overlay district, they'll put in that masonry wall in compliance with the overlay. But here's a quick summary, just to break it down even further. The reason for this request, one, kind of the catalyst, is that Acres and Porter overall project, how it changes access and parking on the site. But also, it's to accomplish a new site plan that shows allowance for the expansion of Don's, which, just to inform you all if you're not already aware, Don's Mobile Lock Shop is a family-owned Norman business. It's been operating since 1972, so coming up on 50 years in Norman. A new parking lot here, like we talked about, to serve Don's and also the commercial uses on the site. The Spud will allow for commercial uses throughout the property. And then the ability, that's kind of another reason for the Spud here, instead of just a straight commercial, it's the ability to retain residential, because currently they rent that out, there's a tenant in place right now. The plan is to keep that residential, but in the future, allow us for commercial. And that is really compliant with the intent of the Porter Quarter Zoner Overlay District. And so here's just some quick quotes from the staff report on this. This is the overlay district, comes straight out of the zoning ordinance. As you can see here, I put a star on the three lots here, it's right in the heart of it, right in the middle. This line is the commercial boundary. So east of the line here is going to be, is planned to be commercial uses. West is to protect the residential, the residential character of these neighborhoods. And so as you can see, as staff agrees with this request, that it meets the intent that the overlay district encourages this type of development. This is an infill, infill project, future growth of the existing business. And then because of the overlay district and the surrounding uses, there's not any adverse land use effects anticipated here. And then finally, as you can see, the development of each of these three lots is already allowed as commercial uses pursuant to that overlay district. And so that is the plan in a nutshell, and I'll stop sharing screen and turn it back over for questions.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Mark, I have one question. In the Spud narrative, it talks about that existing residence to remain. There appears to say you could build a new residence there also, under this narrative. Is that okay with everybody else, or? I mean, could it be a three-story townhome apartment for students, or? That's just a question.
Happy, happy to address it, thank you. First off, height is restricted to two stories. I'll share the screen real quick, just to point it out. But two stories on these two lots, and then this one, as it's already zoned, C2 commercial, there is no maximum height for C2. So we've retained that ability to go maximum, or no, no maximum height for this lot. These two, maximum structure of two-story. But also, we did put in some language about being able to improve or repair that residential structure. But I don't think there's anything in here that would allow a complete renovation for like an apartment or anything other than a single-family residential use.
Oh, well, just what I'm reading says a new residential structure of a similar footprint, but. So that was just having me concerned.
And then, real quick, just to give you a little more assurance, the exhibit B that put has the allowable uses for the site. And it states in there that it's, the allowable use is a single-family residential home that could be remodeled, renovated, or repaired.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
One other thing, this is Sean, let me add in, Commissioner, just it said similar footprint. You also have to anticipate sometimes if a tornado or fire wipes it out and insurance proceeds or having you rebuild the structure, that would be contemplated in that kind of situation.
Okay, as long as it's a single family, I'm fine with it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sorry, Daniels. Do we have any other questions for the applicant from commissioners? Okay, I don't see any. Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, I don't believe we have any. Do we have any discussion for commissioners? And I'd like to, just as a friendly reminder, ask that everybody begin by stating their name before making comments.
This is Day, Commissioner Beck, I move to approve.
Erin Williford, I second.
Thank you, and a vote, please.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
The motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Renee. On to agenda number seven. O-2021-20, Delta Alpha Housing Corporation requests special use for fraternity or sorority house for approximately 2.36 acres of property currently zoned R3 multifamily dwelling district and located at 1320 College Avenue. Do we have a staff presentation?
Uh, yes, my name's Todd Crowell, I'm the architect for the Delta Todd Delta Project. Also a proud alumni, graduated in 1980. And it's been an honor for me to work on this project.
Isn't there a city? We didn't ask for the architect, we asked for a city presentation.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
There is. It's okay, Mr. Morris, it was just a little bit of a confusing moment there. Uh, this is Janaye Greenlee, I need to share my screen with you all. There we go. Um. Just one second, please. Here we are. So Delta Alpha Housing Corporation is requesting special use for fraternity or sorority at 1320 College.
You haven't shared your screen yet.
No. Thanks. I thought I did.
No, you haven't.
Okay.
No, you just maximized it, that's all. That's okay, here.
Where are we at? Yes, there it is. There we go. That, there we go. There we go. Okay, so Delta Alpha Housing Corporation is requesting special use for fraternity at 1320 College. Existing zoning is R3, and they do not currently have a special use. The structure that had been there previously had been destroyed by a fire. And so they're basically bringing this forward to rebuild and bring their zoning into conformance. This is the subject tract, there was an existing fraternity house. It's what remains is still there from the fire. And it's going to be demoed and a new house will be built. So this is the, the house that was there. College Chautauqua to the west, Delta Street to the south, and more fraternities and sororities are to the north. This is the, the house that's there, that's getting ready to be demoed. We're looking to the south, this is fraternity, sorority row, Greek row. And this is north on College. And that is directly east across the street. And this is off of Chautauqua, looking back towards the east and down Chautauqua. They did state that they're going to try to save a majority of those trees that the ice didn't take out. And there'll be a wall that separates the parking lot and from across the street, the single-family neighborhood to the west. And that is looking north onto Chautauqua. Orders, ordinance zero, 2021-20 for your consideration. And happy that, one more slide, sorry. This is the site plan, which the architect will also bring up. This is going to be the, this is the proposed site plan with the house in the center, parking, surrounding sidewalk on Chautauqua. And this is Delta. Like I said, they're going to try to keep most of the trees. The existing drive axes are all going to remain the same, they're not proposing any new accesses off of College or Chautauqua, which is here off Chautauqua College here and here. Again, staff orders this to Planning Commission for your consideration, ordinance number O-2021-20. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Can you unshare the screen?
Yes, me.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for staff? I don't see any. Okay, if the applicant.
There we go.
Okay.
Thank you.
If the applicant has any information that they'd like to supplement, now's your time to have a fore.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for jumping the gun previously, I'm not familiar with your processes. But yes, I was just going to give you a brief overview of what we're building. Max Morris is on with me, he's our civil engineer, so he can answer any technical, civil-type questions. I thought I'd begin by just showing you our fraternity house that this is shortly after his burn, they're still putting fire on it. A little drone footage to show, we had firewalls here and here, which actually worked and protected the residential part of the structure. But the, the front, the public part was pretty much toast, as you can see. She already showed you the, the old site plan. I just put this on here to show that the parking and the building lays out very similar. We did have this strip of land that was unused before. We had a basketball court and volleyball, sand volleyball, and we're going to be utilizing that space as well. Couple of burned photos. So this is an early image, the veneers have changed, but it gives you a good aerial view. This faces College. This is Chautauqua back here in Delta Street. So we had a courtyard before, so a lot of the membership wanted to retain a courtyard, and yet they wanted a two-story house. All the new fraternity houses that have been built have been three stories, and we didn't want to do another one-story structure. So we've gone up two stories, but we've still have a courtyard with a covered walkway that kind of encloses it. So a quick view of the front. Like I said, I'll show you some more recent images, this was our schematic design. This is from Chautauqua and Delta Street. It's inside the courtyard. Going to have an artificial turf field, we're going to have a putting green as well. And this is inside the fraternity house, our only interior view. This is a more up-to-date image. We went from natural stone to brick and cast stone. Some of the alumni wanted a more traditional look. So it's another image of it. The floor plan. The public functions are near the front door, the dining, commercial kitchen, study hall, mom's apartment. And we've. And we built some first floor residences encouraging upperclassmen to stay in the house. What's evolved in fraternity houses is most, most members are one, one and done. They're, they're their sophomore year and they move out junior year. So this is for upperclassmen. We're trying to entice them to stay in the house. The second floor will be sophomore hall. It's primarily residences. We've got common bathrooms, a club area and an outdoor balcony. A larger view. I'll be happy to talk more if anybody wants any particulars. The west wing, which is the senior wing. And then the second floor. So that's a brief overview of what we're building and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for your presentation. Do you mind removing the screen share? Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I don't, I don't see any. Do any members of the audience or public wish to comment? I don't, I don't see any comment and I will. Do we have any discussion for the commissioners?
Well, I will say, being the father of a delt who lived in the house before it burned, I'm glad to see we're finally getting a new house because the old house was embarrassing. Compared to all the new houses that have been built.
Well, thanks, David. Maybe we can get a big contribution from you for this.
Oh, I did. We'll talk about that later.
Well, I've moved to approve.
I was going to say, and McDaniel will, will second.
Thank you so much. And from Commissioner Beck and a second from McDaniel. May we have a vote?
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
The motion carried seven to zero.
Renee. We are at the miscellaneous discussion portion of the agenda. Does staff have any information for the commission? I see you shaking your head, Laura.
Yeah, I think Beth is going to talk about open meetings and COVID and.
Right. I wanted to give you an update. You all may be aware, but the Open Meetings Act had to be amended in order to allow these public meetings to occur by Zoom under the Open Meetings Act. So that was effective through November fifteenth. So this will be our last Zoom Planning Commission meeting. The legislature would have to reconvene in order to extend that amendment. And they won't do so from what we hear until February. So that means that the next two meetings will need to be in person. And obviously you all meet in chambers, so we're doing what we can to strategize that. The city council is facing a similar situation. And so you'll be kept up to date on how that's going to go, but efforts are being made obviously to maybe limit the number of staff that has to be in the room. Maybe we can lower the number count that way. Still doing staff presentations. And perhaps staff won't be sitting everyone up at the dais. That's still being evaluated, but there's only so much spreading out that can be done. So as I said, you'll get information as we have it, but it will go back in person because that amendment has expired.
Let me ask you this. As the city, you know, the university went back or started in the fall and in the, at least in the architecture school, there was a lot of care that was taken to put in HEPA filter systems plus UVC lighting and the kind of things that science is shown to eliminate. The virus, has the city done anything with the city buildings to do the same thing?
Not the two measures that you've mentioned now. I will check into both of those and see if there's been discussions. I'm not obviously privy to all of them, so I can check and get back to you on those. What we have done in a lot of places where we were able was put divider screens. However, at the dais, that's not very effective because literally all you have to do is lean back and you're out from under that. So but in a majority of the buildings where there's been interaction between employees or employees in the public, that's been a pretty good measure so far. I'll check on other ideas as they come about and those two in particular.
Thank you.
I think that's all we had.
Thank, thank you. Beth and Laura, do we have any other comments from commissioners?
We've got a couple of quick comments. One, I wanted to ask the status of the visibility ordinance. I know the council talked about it at the retreat. But haven't really heard when that's coming before planning commission and council to become approved, to become part of our city policies.
I don't know anything. Jane, do you? Jane had to call in. I'm not sure.
I'm here.
Okay.
Commissioner Beck, tonight at Oversight, the council and staff looked at committees and such. And it's my understanding that there's a discussion that unless it is time sensitive for a project. And Beth, if you want to jump in here, if I'm misstating any of this, that the committee meetings won't be meeting until we figure out what we're going to do as far as separation COVID-related security measures for the staff and the community that wants to attend those meetings. So at this point, I'm not sure when that will go before a committee. I, I, I think I'm waiting to see what, what goes before council as far as how the committees are going to be set up. But that meet, like I said, that meeting was just tonight at four o'clock. And so I'm, I'm not sure you know, what I can update further from that.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Beck. I was only going to add that I think the last time we discussed this here, the mention was made that we weren't certain what committee that that had been assigned to. I'm not personally aware of that, but I wondered, Jane, if you had been informed of which committee that will be in, when the committees are able to reconvene.
I have not at this point, no.
Okay. About two meetings ago, we approved a redevelopment along Tecumseh and twelfth. I met with the developers who are eager to develop accessible housing in that subdivision. The term of the housing is supposed to be for senior couples or couples that have their parents living with them. Accessory type dwelling units. And I had a discussion with Vernon McCown today because what I've really been pushing for is for developers to build tract, their tract houses, their, you know, small twelve, fourteen, sixteen hundred foot starter homes accessibly. And I'm meeting with Vernon next week. He was real excited about trying to develop some demonstration homes in the next six months that would show that they could do accessible housing as a standard practice as part of their development. So I'm excited about that. And I didn't even tell him about the ability ordinance that includes some tax incentives because I knew we hadn't gotten to it yet. So, yeah, I'm really excited.
Dave, Commissioner Beck, are you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Jane.
Did, did you hear last, not last night, sorry, Tuesday night, that the three projects that are going forward for the affordable housing that Lisa Craig is doing? Did you hear that they incorporated? I have the list. It's highlighted. I want to say there's eight items from the proposed visibility ordinance that they incorporated on that, those projects.
I'm excited about that. That's cool.
Yeah, there's two on, I want to say it's two on Stewart and one on Johnson, or I may have that flipped.
I thought it was two on Johnson, but either way, there's.
Yeah.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you for telling me that, Jane.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Beck. Do we have any other comments from commissioners? And I, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Nice to see everybody.
Yes.
Hi, thank you.
I get back to my margarita.